Okay. Well, I'll ask you when it gets there. Yeah, okay. All right, is everybody ready? Is Jeff, Jeff, are you there? Is he there? Dr. Bearden, are you present? Dr. Bearden?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 16th, 2021, regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you'll arise for the pledge of allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just to note, Dr. Bearden will be joining us virtually tonight, so you can hear him. But he will not be sitting next to us tonight, so just to be safe. All right. We have an agenda. Is there, I know there's no necessary changes that I'm aware of. Dr. Bearden, we don't have anything to change, do we? Or add?
No, no recommended changes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Lindsay, all in favor. That's unanimous. First up tonight, we have recognitions. I think it was supposed to be Mr. Mitch Young you're going to cover, right?
Checking on me, Sandy. Okay, it gives me great pleasure tonight to stand before you to announce the November Employee of the Month for our entire school system. Before I call her down here, I would like to read just a couple of the things that were shared about her, although I've got pages and pages. So maybe later, if you want to hang around after the board, maybe I can read some more to you. Lynn is so polite and always willing to help. Her record-keeping is spectacular and very accurate. She effectively communicates in person and through her emails. If she does not know something, she honestly tells you and then proceeds to go find out and learn how to do the task. She quickly does a follow-up to relay answers. Lynn is always professional, kind, and helpful. With 12 specialized instruction classrooms, five SLPs, FTE is a huge job. Get everybody a dictionary, so you can look up what all those mean. She does this with excellence and amazing accuracy. Lynn is one in a million, an awesome data clerk. Another one says that Lynn is approachable and friendly. She listens to concerns and helps problem-solve solutions for scheduling, flags, and IC, and enrollments. She is always calm and helps make working with her stress-free. Ms. Wagner has brought a positive attitude to all those around her since first arriving. She's been flexible during frequent change, is proactive, and is a great frontline person to interact with parents. Ms. Wagner is a joy to have at Whitlow. She offers a great communication line to all parents. She's been instrumental in communicating through messengers with COVID notifications. She is there for students and their families and always has, and always answers the call to help. And finally, she has been instrumental with her work on behalf of face-to-face and virtual enrollment, FTE, and helping to communicate with teachers, support staff, family, and families on behalf of our, all of our new Whitlow Wolves. She's gone above and beyond and always does it with a smile. With the wonderful data clerk from Whitlow Elementary School, Ms. Lynn Wagner, come on down. At this time, I think she also has some folks that came here to support here. So if those that came out to support Lynn or the nominated Lynn, if you would stand and we could recognize you as well, and some families. Congratulations, Lynn. At this time, we would like to shine the November Superior Spotlight on North Forsyth Middle School. Principal Todd McCollum and your team, the floor is yours. And I'll bring the mic back over here to you.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bearden. First off, I want to start with two thank-yous. The first thank-you is that present, I appreciate the opportunity to come to present to the board. And I think it's awesome that the board wants to know what's going on in schools and has a good idea of seeing the best, the very best in the schools. And second of all, I want to thank the board members because I have worked in three different states and five different school systems. And I have worked in some school systems where the board was quite dysfunctional, in my own personal opinion. I appreciate the work that you do and I appreciate why you do the work. I think it's for all the right reasons. The, tonight, we're going to talk about some classes that we have at North Forsyth Middle School. And one of the reasons why we have these classes is because with growth, we have to figure out connections classes for our students. And one of the ways that we do this is we get input from our PTSO board. We get input from our LSC. And we talk about the things that, the skills that kids need out there beyond the core academics. And some of the comments that kind of ring true, going back to those LSC meetings when I was talking to parents about what skills you need kids to know. They, for example, told them, if you go out at a business meal, don't eat a full rack of ribs. Okay? They also said if you don't order the most expensive thing on the menu. If you're in a job interview, don't call the person that's interviewing you dude. Call him sir or call her ma'am or call them by their first, their, excuse me, their last name and mister or misses so-and-so. So those are some things that they, as business owners, were telling us that we needed. So my job was then to try to pair what our LSC was telling us and our PTSO board was telling us with the right people. And we found those right people in our building. So first of all, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dave Stevenson to talk about our careers in finance class. And from there, I'm going to talk about, or I'm going to turn it over to Ms. J.J. Pineda for a Wildcat Wellness class that we teach for some, once again, identified by our PTSO and our LSC. So Mr. Dave Stevenson.
Thank you. Dr. Bearden, Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for the, just a couple of minutes here just to talk to you about what I do at North. I always say I get to teach what I think is just one of the greatest classes ever. We do a really good job in the school district of educating kids with math and science and reading. But when they go out into the real world, we figured out that they were lacking just some, some job skills and interviewing skills and finance skills. So one of the things that we talk about, for example, with eighth graders, at 14 in the state of Georgia, they can legally go to work. So right now, with my eighth graders, I'm working with them on how do you fill out job applications? You know, today, we filled out a mock Chick-fil-A application. What are references? Why do you not use mom as a reference? You know, those types of things. How do you, what types of questions will they ask a 14-year-old for, in a job interview compared to what they might ask an adult? So trying to get these kids more comfortable to get ready to go out, make some money, make some spending money, so they're not on your payroll all their lives. And just work on the people skills. And then also, with sixth and seventh graders, we start talking a little bit about money. And we talk about what's the difference between a debit card and a credit card? And how's, how's credit different? And when you put things on a credit card, why do you want to pay that off every month when you get your bill? And what, what is interest? How do credit card companies stay in business with interest? And just all of these skills that I kind of learned along the way, probably by making mistakes, that, you know, we don't want our, our kids to learn that way. And it's, most of them find it, I think, very interesting. Because unless their parents talk to them about money and about job skills, not too many other people do. And so, you know, how do you write a check? You can see the picture of a check there. And I tell the kids, the majority of the time, they're probably not going to write many checks in life. You know, they're going to be using their debit card. They're going to be paying cash. But what about those few times that they do need to fill out a check? So before they get off to college and have to fill out that first check and they realize nobody ever taught them, we go through a couple of, you know, just lessons on how do you write checks and so forth. So credit card scammers, you know, this is a biggie right now. And so, you know, teaching kids, and I try to tell them, when you pull up to the gas station with mom and dad, hop out of the car. Tell mom, oh, mom, wait a minute. Mom, let me check for a credit card scammer. I said, I hope you never find one. But if you do, you want to make sure that somebody's not trying to steal mom and dad's credit card information from you. So it's just all these life skills that you and I have probably learned along the way that we're trying to hit, you know, try to teach kids at an early age. So. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, you know, just, and again, it's, it's like Mr. McCollum said, it's just life skills that, that I think we all would appreciate our kids knowing and just being able to protect them. And as they go to work, being able to protect their money. So.
We hear a lot from people about what should be in the schools. And this is, you know, talking about finances. And especially starting at eighth grade, you know, going into high school. I know with my son, I remember we were at the beach one time and we had pulled up to the ATM and we drove off. And he's like, wait, you can just pull up to that machine and money comes out? And I was like, well, no, it doesn't really work like that. And that's what started our conversation. But you still have to have these conversations all the time because, you know, the debit and the credit card is the difference. So you doing this at eighth grade is really nice to see. So thank you.
This is making it a lot easier for them in the real world, I think. It's great.
And so this is a connections class?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it new this year or have you used it? How long have you been doing?
Oh, four, four years.
Okay.
Four years, I believe.
And is there a lot of interest in this? Because I know different connections classes fill up, right? So what is kind of the level?
They do. And I don't see 100% of the students because if a student is in band or chorus, sometimes that takes up both of their connections. I would guess maybe I see 80% of the students. And what I teach at sixth grade is a little different than what I teach at seventh grade and what I teach at eighth grade. So hopefully, I get to see them at least a year or two. You know, some students I will see for three years, which is really nice because then they get, kind of get the full program that I develop. So it's, like I said.
And some of this goes along with junior achievement, right?
Yeah. Does this go to, are this classes when you take your field trips?
Yes, ma'am. It started off with junior achievement. And then the junior achievement part kind of shifted over to the social studies classes. And so I don't get to go, unfortunately, I don't get to go on the junior achievement field trips anymore because those were really nice. But junior, the junior achievement part is still taught through social studies. And I kind of piggyback on what they're teaching there.
And are all connections kind of done this way? That you would get input from the PTSO board and the LSC if you want to have new connections classes in your school?
I would be more of a question for Mr. McCollum. Yes. Because it is, to me, one of the principals, it's one of the, it's one of the most important things that you do, is develop your program. And I think every, you know, maybe what North Middle needs might be different than what South Middle needs, might be different than Vickery Creek Middle School needs. And so with our, the vertical articulation, too, since I've been there, we've been able to add three connections classes, just simply because of growth. And the other class that we added is agricultural science. But that was based on that strong vertical articulation with North Forsyth High School. And our sounding board for that, we talked about our North United, our, we have a team of, you know, business owners. And we actually just, just met yesterday, parents, every school is represented. And so we do get an idea, like, what do we need as a, what does North Middle need? And we, you know, the principals talk a lot with each other, but there's also a lot of direct input from the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hi, Dr. Bearden. Thank you for having us. My name's J.J. Pineda. And I have to thank Mr. McCollum as well. He took a risk on bringing me into the middle school system. I was an elementary teacher for 20 years. And he also took a chance on this class. So kind of how Dave is, and I want to say to Dave that one of my seventh graders at the end of class today was leaving and there were some boys, they were being silly, very end of the day. And she looks at me, she goes, you know, she goes, I'm more mature than they are because I have Mr. Stevenson's class. So, but it is true. So Dave kind of approaches the old-school, the business sort of things that we need to handle and teach the kids. My role is to work on the other part, which is the mental health and wellness for the kids. And just to back up for a second, when I brought this idea to my administrators, I just, I was in the sixth grade hallway. I was doing advanced E.L.A., I was doing social studies. And I just felt as though there was this lack, there was this space that was missing in our school where the kids could come and they could really just let go for a second and have a moment in their day. Because they don't, it's just nonstop, as we all know. And so I just felt like I needed to build a curriculum around needing this space and figuring out ways for them to deal with the stress and deal with the pressure and cope with their, you know, their lives. And there was so much that was brought to my attention just in the conversations with these kids. Do you want to talk about restaurant tipping? My son had him, he tips very well. All right, job interviews?
Go ahead.
Okay. So in any case, I brought this idea to my administrators when this came about three years ago, well, four years ago. And I just said, I really feel like I want to do something different. And there was a space open for us in the connections department. And so I took my training in yoga, which I had already, I'd certified years ago. And then just sort of life experience. And I did some training with meditation and breathing techniques. And I just put it all together, sort of around the health standards a little bit. And there's not really like a framework for my class. So we call it Skills for Adolescence. The kids call it yoga class. And as you look, there are some things that we teach. It's really, I think the biggest part for me is them problem-solving and improving their relationships with their kids. And I'll tell you that I benefit from this every day, too, because the things that they open up about, they, they come in and they know now this is a safe space. Every class that I have is kind of like a family atmosphere. And we build trust with each other and they really need to talk sometimes. So this provides them with that space. So I'm not going to talk so much to the slide, I'll just tell you a little bit about the class. It's based on three things. So I have it set up sort of like a yoga studio as best as I can. We've got dim lighting and salt lamps. PTSO's been great. And the kids come in and we do three basic things every day. We start off kind of just discussing the day and then they lie down and they close their eyes. And we have sort of guided instruction on how to slow down, take a breath. And they focus each day on some different part of just being still, which for a lot of them, as you know, with their phones and all the distractions, it's difficult. So that's the first part of the class. The second part of the class is movement. And so I bring a lot of yoga in. I had a friend come in and do kickboxing the other day. And it just builds some like empowerment in them, you know? These little kids, these sixth graders, were just ready to go. And it was so cool. The next day, they're like, when's Ms. Jen coming back? And I was like, well, she has a job. But, you know, and so I bring community people in who can share something. So there's the mindfulness in thinking and paying attention to our thoughts and processing. There's the movement piece. And then there's also the part about dealing with all the team pressures and the things that are going on in their lives. And so we'll talk about things that come up in school as things occur. We'll also talk about, we've used the DVT therapy as a guideline before. So we use this dialectical behavioral therapy to talk about dealing with their anxiety, dealing with social problems that they're having, dealing with parents, all these sorts of things that they need some help with. So we'll talk about those. So there's a lot of social, emotional education as well. Like today, we talked about discernment in class and what that word means and how you have to take a good thing and a bad thing and, you know, look at your choices and how things are going. Like if you have a choice to make, what would be the worst outcome and what would be the best outcome? And teaching them to kind of pause, to think, not be so impulsive. So it's day-to-day. But anyways, I appreciate you letting me share with you. Thank you.
I think you bring up a good point. When kids are in elementary school, every day, they have PE or they, and they, more so they have recess. And they get out and they get the wiggles out. When you get into middle school, there isn't a recess. And they have their classes all day long and they have their lunch and it's short. And they just, they don't have any time to socialize and they don't get any break. So, and socially, mature-wise, middle school, they're trying to figure out who they are. They don't know who they are. They go from being with the same kids every day, all day in elementary school, till they're passing classes and they're not with the same kids. And they don't know who they're going to be and what they're going to, they might be in band or, they just don't have that same social group. So they're trying to figure out who they are. So having a stress relief or a moment like this where they can kind of just take a break is kind of a nice thing that they just are, something that middle school is not an opportunity they usually have.
They don't talk, you know, they, they talked to me about how they
They need a break.
Have to switch gears so often, especially in the days when we have all of the classes. And then on the longer days, then it's, you know, I have to really sit for an hour and 45 minutes, four times a day and pay attention. I know for a faculty meeting, 20 minutes of checking my phone, you know? And so it just really, it has been nice to be able to, the joke with the kids is that they lie down and get, get graded on doing nothing. But it's harder than it seems. And so they're really embracing it. The cool thing that I think this year is probably, it's been my third year doing this, and the best thing that I've, I've heard is when kids come in and they're like, you know, I pulled a muscle last night at practice, can we do something with hamstrings? And then we do the yoga that's based on something that's, so they're connecting with it. And the other thing, too, is when the kids run in, they're like, oh, I've been waiting for this all day. You know, and they really are finding the value. It's blown me away this year. They've just really taken it. I think I have a better understanding because I've learned from them what works and what doesn't. So, but yeah, that is exactly right.
So after doing this for several years, is there any kind of connection that you're seeing with behavior or discipline? Has that gone down over the years or has it not really?
You don't know that it's been going on long enough. I think that the conversations with the kids that I've had, so I've had some sixth graders now and eighth graders, I've had them all three years. I know with those kids, the dialogue that we have, you know, one of the girls today, in fact, she said, I was going to break up with my boyfriend on text last night. And this is an eighth grader who I've had since sixth grade. She goes, but I paused and I thought about it. And she's like, and I wasn't acting impulsively. She goes, I was thinking about class. And so, so those sorts of things, I do think that, you know, wherever it registers in their mind, I hope it is, it is, you know, creating conversation, at least within themselves. And I tell them, you know, you may pick this up 20 years later. You may not buy into this right now. This might be like, oh, I've got to lie down and, you know, I have to be quiet and be still. And that's really uncomfortable for some kids and adults. So I will be eager to see as we go forward.
And it's not for everybody.
But again, it's just the third year. It's not for everybody. My kids personally, I have a daughter graduating this year and two juniors, one's a stepdaughter. And I don't think any of them would enjoy my class. Like, they really wouldn't. But, and so I understand that. But if I can give it to you as an option, and that's really the goal, is to try to like provide them with a bunch of different things. So this works for me, this doesn't, you know? Any other questions?
I like it's optional.
Thank you so much for letting us share tonight. Appreciate it. Pardon me? Yes, we do, yes. We have majority of our kids downstairs. The majority of my kids.
Excuse me, ma'am, this is, this is a meeting, but perhaps you can connect up afterwards. Thank you.
So thank you, thank you. We appreciate your time. And I just want to say that as a principal, I get a lot of phone calls from parents that request these classes for their kids. So it's something that I'm very proud of and it's something I'm very proud of employees at North Forsyth Middle School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In fact, you can get a teenager to stop and think and pause is amazing. That is, that's, that's
And I find myself, like, say, like today, I was thinking about coming here all day long. I kept thinking about coming here and getting nervous to speak in front of people. It's like, I don't want to think about that right now, it'll come back.
It'll come back. It's a good lesson for all of us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was great. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look that over? Questions? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Darla, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, next presentation and discussion is for the finance report with Larry Hamel.
Good evening.
Got some paperwork there.
Dr. Bearden, tonight, we're going to discuss the 2021 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind. We started the month off with $61.6 million in cash. And we ended the month at $49 million. This time last year, we had about $36 million in cash at the end of October of last year. You can see it's gone up about $13 million. Most of that's due to the CARE Act funds that we had from last year. Year-to-date, we collected $119.5 million. The past month, $37.6. We're at 23.49%. This time last year, we were a little bit ahead at 23.85%, but we're still on par where we need to be. On the expense side, we spent $169 million year-to-date, $43 million month-to-date. We're at 33.29%. We're a little bit less when we were last year at 33.36. But then again, we're still right on par where we were last year. Debt service, good news on there. If you look at the debt service account, 37.7, the money's coming good. We were at 32.8 last year. SPOS 5, we're at 66. We're at 35.4. We should end up with SPOS 5 between 40 and 50 million dollars, once we pay the last debt payments, all said and done. Of course, the SPOS 5 money market fund, that's just money in there from leftover from when we had T-bills. And we're at 103.8. This time last year, we're at 76.7 million. Special revenue funds, you can see we've collected most of the money so far year-to-date on that. Most of that is SPOS 3 money we've collected. And there's some expenses in there coordinating with that, as well as some other special programs. Capital projects, school food nutrition, capital projects. We have facility acquisition cost of $7 million this month. Transfer the money in to cover that. We're at $29 million in capital projects. School for service. We had program revenue of 2.5. We spent 1.8. You can notice that the fund balance is very robust right now at that part and that will continue to be like that the rest of the year. Investment summary. We have $92.6 million. This time last year, we had $174.5. The big difference really is when you look at Fund 354, you can see that, excuse me, I'm sorry, Fund 306, we had $123 million in bond funds. We're down to 22.7. That's because we're spending all the money to finish up the schools, plus new hopes going on. So our SPOS 5 collections, which will end March of next year, now that SPOS 6 has been approved, and that will begin in May, April of next year. Right now, we're collecting $184 million point seven. Last, the total average is 3.6. Last 12 months has been 4.3. Last year, this time, we're at 3.4. So we're averaging about $197,000 more on average than this time last year. And almost $940,000 more just in the last 12 months alone. Cash receipts for the elementary schools and disbursements, with the ending cash balance at $4.2 million. We were at $4 million last year, so they're slightly ahead. And they're back to normal activity, by the way. Same thing can be said of middle and high schools. Their receipts and disbursements are back to normal. Middle school is at $2 million. This time last year, at 1.47, they made a lot of headway in getting back to where they need to be. High schools were at $6 million, they're at 4.65. They're way ahead where they were this time last year. And of course, this will give you a breakdown. We're at $12 million total. You can see elementary's at 34%. This time last year, they're 40. And that's just because after-school program wasn't as robust as it was. And then high schools at 14. Last year is 17 now. And, excuse me, the high schools are at 46 versus 49. Are there any questions?
It'd be interesting to see with more, with the spring semester, with more elementary students returning back and if they, if their after-school numbers will change.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to see, yes.
I think we need just one little update, too. The last SPOS collection, you had September repeated. So you need to probably change that to October, I guess. And collection in September.
That probably was October, but we just put September probably by accident.
Okay.
Because the numbers are different.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just may update that online. Thanks.
So tonight, we are going to ask the board to please approve, um, the sale of the 2021 refunding bond issues. And just some highlights on the 2021 refunding bond issues. When Forsyth sold their 2013 and 2014 bonds, we included an option for redemption provision that allowed the district to call redeem outstanding bonds at par of 100% after 10 years in order to refinance or refund the remaining bonds for debt service savings. A bond refinance refunding is similar to lowering the mortgage rate on your home. With interest rates near historic 30-year lows and the district's AA ratings from Moody's and S&amp;P's, which have been reaffirmed in the last two weeks, Forsyth County Schools locked in rates to refinance the callable maturities of its 2013 and 14 general obligation bonds, totaling $100,075,000. The par amount of the Series 2021 General Obligation Refunding Bond is $109,285,000. Forsyth County Schools have overwhelming demand for the 2021 refunding bonds from 41 different institutional investors totaling over $942 million in orders. With 44 individual retailers investing in a total of $1.8 million in orders. This means we had 8.6 times the amount of bonds that we had available to be sold. This is a very strong demand, allowing us to lower the initial rates used to pre-market the Series 2021 bonds by 10 basis points. After the cost of issuance for the 21 bonds, Forsyth County will save about $7.17 million for the remaining life of the 2013 and 14 bonds being refinanced from 2020.
So that's up over a million from what you thought, isn't it?
Yes. Now, they, then again, the rates were a little higher back then, and they've meddled out at the time. If you want, Bryce can talk more to that as well. As we approach the optional redemption dates for the district's other outstanding bonds, depending on where the interest rates are, we will plan to refinance these bonds, issuance for debt service savings as well. So tonight, I'm asking you to go ahead with Dr. Bearden's approval to take a vote and to vote the approval of the 2021 refunding bonds.
Recommend approval of the 2021 refunding bond resolution.
Does anybody have, so, basically refining says we're going to save money on the interest, and we're saving now 7 point, how much?
7.17 million.
Which is a million more than we last were expecting, so that's really.
What, um, did you say the, the redemption provision after 10 years?
Yes.
Has it been?
Yeah.
Yes.
How does that work?
Oh, it has been 10 years?
Yes.
Well, she's wondering, because you were talking about the 2013, so she's wondering, it's, we're not quite there, so it's.
I guess I'm just wondering.
But it was originally the 2005?
Bryce, you want to talk to that?
Sure.
I know when it gets confusing.
I'm Bryce Holcomb. Work for Citigroup. We had the pleasure of working with you on your refunding bonds. Uh, what it is, is, is when you initially sell the bonds, and this is market, market standards, you, you have what's known as a standard 10-year par call. And at any time, you can use that call, and in, in this case, uh, you, I mean, you did what's known as, and, uh, really, uh, excuse me, advanced refunding. So what you've done is use the call date and escrowed the money, really, until those call dates on the 13 and 14 bonds. And so on those, on those, on those actual, you know, call dates, which is Feb. 1 of '23 on the 13 bonds, and, you know, Feb., really, 1 of '24 on the 14 bonds. And that's not unusual. If, if you like the rate environment that we're in now, which you did, we can move ahead with the refunding, recognizing that rates are now going up, you know, to beat the rate increase. So, so that is the reason that you use that advanced refunding technique.
Okay, thanks.
Because if we wait, it's just going to go up, and it won't be worth it.
Right, exactly, exactly. What other questions might you have about the refunding? Be happy to answer.
No, we have been waiting. We've been, we've been waiting for this to happen, so we know we've been watching and trying to find the right time to do it. So this was the time. So, thank you for doing all that work.
I appreciate all the help that Bryce and his team's given us the last couple of weeks to get all set up and going.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Thanks so much.
And from the demand, obviously, people wanted to do this for us, so.
Yeah, realize this, as Larry mentioned, you had over $940 million worth of orders for $110 million in bonds, essentially. So you were nearly nine times oversubscribed. What that shows is how, how good a name you, you have in the bond market. You are rated AAA, as you know, and that's very unusual. And, uh, that obviously helped with the demand. And, and, and then we use that really excessive demand to lower your rates.
And that was good news, that I don't, make sure, we don't want to gloss over that. When we made the decision, when COVID first hit, and we were trying to balance our budget, we had initially, it was a $26 million deficit, and it ended up getting down to $23 million deficit. As a board, we really wrestled, and we spent a lot of time with you looking at what we needed to do to balance our budget. And we had to dip into our reserves at the time, $23 million, to balance our budget so that we could open our doors on time and serve our students. And that was a really tough decision, because we knew that by doing that, we took our reserves from 15% at the time, was going to be down to 10%, which we knew would likely damage our credit rating, and we knew that we could lose our AAA. But at the time, we said, you know what, so be it.
You got to look after the kids first, that's right.
Our number one reason of being here was for the students, and we said, that's what we're going to do.
Right.
And it was the right decision, and we opened our doors, like, very few school systems. And it ended up working out. It was the right decision. The economy was able to recover, and it ended up being the right thing. So here we are, a year, two later, and we still have our AAA. So it was meant to be, and we did the right thing.
Madam Chair, that's exactly right. And, and recognize this, one-year dips like that, the rating services recognize that, and, uh, this board has always been unifiscally responsible. And, uh, you know, the rating services recognize that, too. And so you guys have a, just a super name in the marketplace as a, you know, as y'all already know, there, there's only three, you know, AAA-rated, really, systems here in the state of Georgia, and you guys are one of them. You know, Cobb and Gwinnett are the other two, so certainly hats off to this board.
Thank you for that work. All right, we have a recommendation from Dr. Bearden. Is there a motion?
Sure.
I just want to clarify, just to make sure that we're clear with that. This is refinancing basically a bond that's been approved previously at a lower rate. I know it here, it says 2021 refunding bond resolution. Somebody might say, oh, they're refunding their bond. They're putting a new bond in 2021. I just want to make it clear, we're actually just refinancing at a lower rate to pay off pre-existing bonds from several years ago, back in 2005.
That's exactly right, Mr. McCall.
Saving us money in the long run.
Yep. And, and, uh, state law allows, you know, uh, this to be done without a referendum, by the way. So, so that is the reason you can move ahead with that, as long as you save money, and you clearly did.
All right, so we have a recommendation, Dr. Bearden. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have legislative priorities for 2021, '22. Jennifer Cracilow?
Good evening. Last week, I presented to you the changes for our new legislative priorities, and we had the three additions. The one, just to update you, was to provide the state funding for one school nurse per school. We all know the demands that are put on our school nurses, especially with the pandemic. And then also to promote changes to allow the district to utilize retired educators. You know that we have a sub shortage, so this would be a great way that we'd be able to fill high-need teaching positions. And then, um, to consider CARES Act funding whenever there's inequities in the state budget. We all know about the, about the money that other school systems have received as compared to our state funding and our federal funding from the CARES Act, so that's something that we would like our local delegation to please consider. At this time, I would like to request the superintendent to please recommend approval of the 2022 legislative priorities.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I really do appreciate the partnership we have with our local legislative delegation. We actually will be meeting with them very soon, in the next couple of weeks, to go over these, these priorities, talk about priorities they may have from their perspective. Uh, but the elected officials in Forsyth County work really well together, and we certainly appreciate their support of not only our school system, but public education in general. So with that, I would recommend approval of legislative priorities for 2021, 2022.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Darla?
Second.
By Tom. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. All right, next, we have certify the SPOS election results. Jennifer?
After the SPOS election was approved, the Voter Board of Registrations and Elections had to certify the election results, and then they pass it off to, um, the Board of Education. And you now have a resolution before you to certify the results. There was a total of 12,617 ballots cast. The one spoiled ballot was an individual that actually voted and decided to withdraw their, um, ballot. The 17 blank ballots, that meant that people voted, but they left the question or questions blank. And then you can see, it was approved by 8,759 individuals, and there were 3,840 individuals that voted against the SPOS. So at this time, I'd like to request the superintendent to please recommend approval of the resolution of the Board of Education of Forsyth County declaring the results of the sale and use tax election held on November 2, 2001, and for other related purposes.
Once again, I shout out to the citizens of our community for showing their support of our school system. You know, 69% in favor of SPOS is, is a very remarkable number. We should all be very proud of that. And once again, thank our citizens for their support. I recommend the board certify the SPOS election results.
Is there a motion?
Second.
By Lindsey. Second by Tom. Questions, folks? All in favor? That's unanimous. If there be any questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is the 2022, '23 Elementary School Attendance Map with Mr. Mitch Young. Got you. Yep.
So no changes since, since the final draft was shown to you at the work session? And I would put that forth to Dr. Bearden for final approval?
Okay, I would recommend the board approve the 22, '23 Elementary School Attendance Map as presented.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
By Darla. Any questions? All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. Mr. Young? Up for the 2022, uh, sorry, 2023?
23, 24 calendar. Yes, ma'am. Again, the, uh, the final draft, the final version of that that we submitted for your approval or consideration last, uh, at the work session, I would ask Dr. Bearden to put that forward for final approval.
Also, I recommend approval of the 2023, 2024 school calendar. I want to also thank all of the feedback we've heard from stakeholders. We made a significant amount of changes from the original draft based on that feedback. And it's always nice when we hear from our stakeholders on what they believe will be the best calendar for our students. So I would recommend approval.
So moved. Second.
By Wes. Second by Tom. Questions?
I just want to say, yeah, the same thing. I, I think this is the, uh, the most we've listened to the feedback from all the local school council, from the community with their survey, and actually made some changes with it. So, uh, good job with that. I know it was hard, but that's what it needs to be. It needs to be transparent, and the feedback from the community. So thank you.
Yeah, it's been fine tuned, but you made some innovative changes this time, like.
Well, and again, I, I'm, I'm grateful to, uh, Dr. Salome and, and Ms. Rice and all of our other departments. We, we had a lot of input to kind of interpret the, the feedback that we got from the community to really dig in and see how that would impact all the different departments. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to do what's best for the students and our families, and, uh, that's ultimately why we made those adjustments. So I appreciate your approval.
As Lindsey said, it's a Rubik's Cube. All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. All right, and last but not least, under action items, has established the 2022 board meeting dates. Did everybody have time to look over those? No conflicts? Was there a motion to approve, then?
Second.
Motion by Lindsey. Second by Tom. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, next up, we have public participation. Right now, we could take a brief break. If anybody does want to exit, that would be a great time. If you don't want to stay, if you'd like to stay, that's perfectly fine. If there's anybody that came in late that is here for public participation, if you're in the back of the room, if you want. I see we have some empty spots. If you want to move forward, because we've had people in the back before. Everybody's in their spots. That's good. All right, just a few comments. All speakers shall address the board by first stating their names. All remarks should be made to the board chair and addressed to the chair. There's no remarks to be made to individual board members. If you have any printed materials, please give them to Ms. Abbott. Please be civil and respectful in your, on your remarks. When you come up, we're, we're here to listen to you tonight, so when you come up, please look forward and speak into the microphone, because this meeting is being broadcast, and it's also being recorded. So in order for us to hear you and for other people, please make sure you speak into the microphone. And I think that's it. Do I have a list of the names, or? Looking for the list. Do I have it? I don't have it. Just looking for the list. I don't have it. We'll just take a brief break. We'll take a two-minute break.
I'm just doing a sound check for Jennifer right now, just checking to see if she can hear the audio.
We're going to start back. It was a quick two-minute break. Our first speaker tonight is Hank Sullivan. Is he here? Can't see him. Not here. All right, next is Jerry Chrisell? Sure? I was going to say, first seat. There you go.
I, I get to be first all the time. My name is Jerry Chrisell. One of the key pillars of many diversity, inclusion, and equity programs is the idea of privilege. Most often cast in terms of skin color, or even more oddly, sexual preference, privilege is used as a justification for treating people differently. If you have lots of privilege, the expectations on you are high. If you don't have a lot of privilege, the expectations on you are low. Now, save for a moment that we accept this premise, just for a moment. Imagine that simply being light, white, and straight is always great privilege, and being dark, black, and gay is always very little privilege. Ignore for a moment that light, white people can be poor, or that dark, black people can be rich. Ignore for a moment that straight people can have learning disabilities, or that gay people can be geniuses. There are two primary ways that you can decide to address the alleged differences in privilege. One way to do it is to run a fine-tooth comb through the system and remove any explicit favoritism. If there is a rule that says only straight, white people get to sit in front of the bus, you get rid of that rule. You equalize the playing field by removing explicit privileges, given because of a certain skin color or a certain sexual preference. The other way to do it is to come up with new rules that explicitly add favoritism to the people that you believe have very little privilege. If gay people have a harder time in math, you make a new rule that says, if you're gay, you get extra math tutoring. Or if there aren't enough dark, black people in the country line dancing team, you make a new rule that says 15% of the country line dancing team has to be black. It used to be that the idea of being colorblind and treating people based on the content of their character rather than the color of their skin was the socially accepted ideal. We spent decades removing discriminatory rules from our systems, working towards equity in treatment, and this worked. It helped us remediate grave injustices of the past and was leading us towards a truly equitable future. Sadly, this point of view has fallen out of favor with people who run most of our systems. Hollywood, the mainstream media, much of academia, and even a large number of politicians have now embraced the idea of equity of outcome rather than equity of treatment. It is no exaggeration to say that today, we live in a system that is characterized not by the white privilege of the 1950s, but by the woke privilege of the 21st century. If you have the right politics in 2021, you can riot, loot, and burn with no punishment. But if you have the wrong politics in 2021, you can lose your job, be thrown into solitary confinement over simple trespassing charges, or be banned from major social media platforms. And so what can we do? Now that we've spent years giving explicit systemic privilege to the woke and taking away privilege from conservatives and libertarians, can we use the same argument to ensure that DEI provides new rules for helping conservatives and libertarians who are now systemically discriminated against? Or should we instead recalibrate our thinking and treat all people as individuals deserving of equal respect and treatment, rather than judging them by their group characteristics? It is my hope that any future DEI programs adopted by the board are scrutinized for implicit and explicit woke bias. Thank you very much for listening, and as always, if there's anyone who disagrees with me, I'd love to take them out to lunch and hear their point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sean Graham.
Good evening, Sean Graham. I'm here to talk about the accreditation that we're coming up against. Cognia, the first page of that packet, their mission is a commitment towards real change in diversity, equity, and inclusion. That is their mission statement. So why is this important towards our accreditation? Because they are the accrediting body that we'll be going with through the history that is preceded from Saks-Cassie to Advanced ED to, or Better Progress, Advanced Education, to Cognia, through the purchasing of these organizations. Cognia has absorbed four other regionally accredited accrediting bodies to create almost a monopoly, because there's only four left in this country. You can see the standards. That's after page one. They explicitly, in standard one, have, they changed it to fairness instead of diversity. Fairness, equity, inclusion. We go with Cognia. It is mandated regardless of what the people want. They also have other types in their standards that go along with the social-emotional learning, which is handcuffed to DEI, which is married to CRT. They're all one and the same. My daughter, who goes to a school in District 5, has mandatory social-emotional learning, academic, non-academic, 38 minutes on every Monday. I reached out to the admin, and they told me, no, she cannot be removed from this. Mandatory for her to attend a social-emotional learning. Now, from Ms. Pineda's demonstration of what she teaches, we could see that social-emotional learning has many meanings, just like DEI does, too. But what we cannot do is have mandatory social-emotional learning, whereas they have it optional. Thirdly, we have a solution. I've been told through email from one of the Board of Education members that we use Cognia because they are the best, but we are grandfathered into the old standards. That is not how accreditation works. We are held to the new standards when we go through reaccreditation every five years. GAC, or Georgia Accrediting Commission, has been around since 1904. They are run through regions at UGA. Their mission is the very last page of what they require us to do, and it is curriculum-based, not as in the emotional learning part, but the facilities, the teachers, and the requirements. And that is an accrediting body that is important, because Atlanta Public School System uses it. K-8, 46,000 students in K-8, 59 schools. Another Board of Education member said that we can't use GAC because they can't handle us. Well, I believe that we can. They can handle us, because obviously with Atlanta Public School, as well as DeKalb County's K, uh, high school uses them as well, which has 22 schools. How many schools do we have? 22. We have, unfortunately. We have unfortunately 6,000 more than the Atlanta Public Schools K-8, but they are more than capable of handling our accreditation. Why is accreditation important? Because it helps our kids go to colleges outside of Georgia, as well as receive federal funding to include HOPE Scholarship. Georgia is an accountability state. They don't accredit schools, like other states, about half the United States. Well, this is part one. Thank you, I'll be back in a minute.
The next speaker is John Bivens. Not here. I don't think Ellison is here either. Cindy Martin? Cindy Martin is up next. Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Hi, I'm Cindy Martin. Cognia is a very dangerous accreditation company. On their website, the CEO states, quote, "We are introducing accreditation standards that emphasize the importance of removing barriers of prejudice, bias, and discrimination. It is in our best interest that we and the institutions we serve are reflective of a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion," end of quote. "The only purpose an accreditation company should have is ensuring excellent education." Yet, Cognia clearly states their purpose is not excellent instruction or education, but radical ideology. Forsyth County schools did not need a DEI plan. Cognia's recommendations were purely based on agenda and not on the needs of our students. For example, this is page 27 of our last accreditation report. The stakeholder feedback scored well above the national average. The average was three, and we received a 3.29. This means that students and parents in our community gave our schools high scores in all areas. Where is the evidence of discrimination? Where is the evidence of inequity or bias? It's not here, because this is from the parents and the students. We gave the schools high scores. We didn't say that there was discrimination, so it's not there. Another fact from the accreditation report on page 34. Dr. Bearden stated, "The system was awaiting the results of the review so that the recommendations could be incorporated into the strategic plan." So before Dr. Bearden even knew what the recommendations were, he was fully committed to incorporating them into our school system. He didn't say that they would be discussed with parents or the community. And now we're reaping the consequences. A county full of angry parents who don't trust the superintendent or the board. Cognia clearly states on page 41 that the schools that they accredit must ensure that their recommendations are implemented. Who has control over our children? Is it the parents, or is it Cognia? It's clearly radical Cognia. I have four children, and I say no to Cognia accreditation in 2022. The Georgia Accrediting Commission is a much better fit. Their stated mission is to establish standards promoting high-quality instruction for children in Georgia. That's it, nothing more and nothing less. Even though my board member told me that GAC only works with elementary schools, this is not true. I spoke with the executive director yesterday, and they give accreditation through high school. The GAC was started by the University of Georgia and accredits over 1,200 schools. We say no more to Cognia. With the current equity and inclusion policies that we have now, there is a high possibility that with my three daughters, I'm going to start seeing boys who identify as girls in the bathrooms, in the locker rooms, and on the sports teams. We cannot have this. We see this happening all around our nation, and we have to be aware. We have to understand that this can come here if we do not protect our students and our children, and be very careful about the policies that we institute. So from the strategic surveys, excuse me, the feedback here, we did not need the DEI. I'm not sure why it happened, but we're asking you to reconsider it and do not use Cognia, because they have an agenda.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christine Preston. Could you restate your name, so I could just make sure I pronounce that correctly?
It's Kristy Preston.
Kristy?
Hi. President of Cognia Accreditation, the nonprofit we're about to saddle ourselves with for the next five years, says in a three-minute video on their website that they're committed to helping our institutions address the complex issues of systemic racism and inequities. So I'm here tonight to ask the question, why are we trying to solve a problem that does not exist? I argue that DEI injects race into the lives of our schoolchildren. Its influence and its tenants are already in our schools, since this all started back in 2017. Unfortunately, because of this, my kids have already received the message of shame and guilt over their skin color. DEI teaches that racism and racial discrimination permeates the experience of the citizens in America, and that we are inherently and almost incurably racist. This kind of thinking is immoral and wrong. It's anti-American and will set us back decades. I believe all parents have a fundamental desire for our kids to get a great education. If we're going to be prepared for the future, we need a whole new approach to K-12 education that prepares our kids not just for college, but for careers. We need to stop looking backward, but instead teach the next generation of kids about what is possible for their future. Case in point, Alliance Academy for Innovation. They were here last month. My oldest graduated, first graduating class of Alliance Academy, I have a 16-year-old and a 10-year-old, Chad Angie. Alliance Academy for Innovation, they were here just last month talking about cybersecurity pathways and criminal justice and law pathways, well as many other pathways. Let's bring in programs, even in the elementary school, we can bring in simple programs that are similar to that, to teach our kids about what is possible here in America for everyone. Programs aligned with opportunities and career goals are so much better than programs that teach identity politics. I'm here tonight as a parent, and I'm asking you, please, scrap the DEI plan. Spend our tax dollars on enhancing art, music, STEM, and PE departments. These are the programs that have far-reaching impact in a positive way for all the kids of all age groups, and give opportunities that move them forward in life and keep them safe and healthy. Thank you.
For tonight.
Bit of a different topic. I'm Ed Soli. Appreciate the financial presentation today. That's more of mine is along the lines of, I will admit, I got to speak with Wes before and took a little bit of steam out of my britches on my presentation. I think it's fair to say I have been involved before the standing-room-only events. This summer, I was in here when it was just me and my neighbor, mostly just watching, observing. And then in the standing-room-only events, I spoke and gave my two cents on things. And ultimately, I let y'all know that I've pulled my kids from public school and pursued a Christian education. That doesn't absolve me from involvement. I think, you know, my kids, future spouses are potentially in this public school. I have nieces and nephews in this public school. And the other day, I was looking around, just searching on the Forsyth County Board of Education website, just reading agenda meetings, meeting notes, and I noticed this notice of property tax increase. And I won't read the whole thing, but basically, it's the Board of Education adopted a new mileage rate, or a mileage rate that's a 2.2% increase. Basically, without this increase, there'd be a rollback that would put it instead of at 17.3, 16.928. And I was shocked to see that that happened in June. June, when I don't know that there was more people that have ever been involved in this county. I think that was the most intense we've ever been. And again, I've talked to Wes, I think what's happened is there's so much on y'all's plates that you get a brief overview, and the financial thing tonight was kind of a great example. He said a lot of numbers, and they're real fast. I'm sure you guys get to see them beforehand and study them if you want. If you don't have, I'm assuming a master's or more in accounting, it goes quick. And my concern is that it's just too much to understand, and you have to ask questions. But what concerns me is that we're too much in the status quo. And there's too much, well, this is how it was explained, so I voted yes. And I think there's a transparency issue. How these meetings happened and people didn't know, I think is a problem. I heard a lot about East SPOLOST. And I know you had a duty to inform, and I know those were met, but I think there is a difference between a duty to inform and an intent to inform. You intended to inform on the East SPOLOST, and I knew about it. You did not intend to inform about this mail change. And I think it passed without anybody knowing. And I think the budget could have been redone. My home values went up drastically. I think the budget increased enough as it was. We could have seen this rollback finally promised to us from seven years ago. I think that's something, I don't know what it looks like, but you guys have to find a way to bring more people in to help you dive deeper into these issues. I know you put in more hours than the $4,000 calls for, but I think we have to find a way to get more people involved.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation. Next, we have points of information. I know, Wes, you wanted to bring up some interesting...
Do you want to see if Dr. Bearden has anything?
I know that you do.
I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden. I know Wes has some really good information.
No, I just wanted to share, let me just turn this on. I wanted to share that with the Homeless Youth Council, we have a partnership with The Place of Forsyth. And we all know that The Place of Forsyth is an amazing organization inside Forsyth County, and I think we're very privileged to have it here, very blessed. But they host a holiday house each year, and the holiday house is for qualified families to come in and actually try to have a Christmas, where a majority of us will have a Christmas this year. There are a lot in the community that won't, and The Place provides that. And so they collect donations, so they can give, but they actually separate it for age group of students. And what we're passionate about from the Homeless Youth Council is the middle school and high school. They talk about that this is the hardest, most difficult group to buy for, so they provide a list. And so I encourage everybody, and I know the board's going to participate, and we have other organizations that are helping, but go to The Place, look up this list, and see what some of the items you can buy. Like I said, they say it's kind of difficult, but then when you start reading some of this stuff, you're like, oh, yeah, that's it. Like headphones, wallets, purses, perfume, Axe body spray for teenage boys. I mean, yeah, absolutely, you know? And so those are some of the things. Hoodies, I guess, are the new thing out there, and so any kind of sports hoodie. And like I said, you know, if we're going to, I'm going to have a good blessed Christmas, I'm going to give back. And I just want other people to know and have the opportunity and be transparent and say, hey, look, there's other organizations out there that need help. And so The Place of Forsyth with the high school students really needs your help.
Are they working with the churches?
They do work with the churches, yeah.
But at our church, Sunday, they had a big board, and I think that's what it was. And it had like exactly what you said, for a 16-year-old boy, headphones and, you know, a size-large hoodie, and you pull the cards and you get it and take it back, but I think it was part of that.
So I've been talking to everybody I know, and so I know Brownsbridge and churches like that I've been in contact with, they said they're going to really focus on the high school and middle school students, because they're kind of forgotten, but they're part of this community. And so this is a great way to give back. So that's all I just wanted to mention.
There was even things on the list they said that they don't need, which I thought was interesting as well.
Yeah, there were two things, SUT animals.
Yeah.
Org games, and iTunes cards. They get enough iTunes cards.
Which is good to know.
Is there a way to, I know when you were working on, I think, creating the house...
The Homeless Youth Council?
Yes. So when you're focused, I think certain furniture or something could be designated, like if someone wants to donate something...
Oh, for the cottage.
For the cottage, yeah.
The cottage is for the female teenagers.
Yeah, if I wanted to donate something specifically for the kids in a cottage, or can you say that?
Yeah, so just contact The Place and see what you can do with it. I think that's a little bit different from the gift guide for the holiday house.
Okay.
The holiday house is basically set up for families, they can come in, and they're given certain points and they can use to get items. So if I know my son needs, you know, wants a wallet, and there's a wallet there, then I can pick that up, I'll wrap it, and then I can take it home. So, but I think definitely The Place could use that for other things.
And they always do, if you don't want to shop, they always take cash donations as well.
Yeah.
I was over there today doing donations, and it was completely packed with cars from people either taking food donations or people dropping off, people shopping there. It is a very busy place. So they, and they've expanded now into, what other county? Is it Cherokee?
Yeah, Dawson County.
The Dawson County, and so they are, they've got a good model that's really working well for the community, so.
Thank you.
Great organization. So, Dr. Bearden, you had nothing else? You are good? Well, I'm not good, but...
Yes, I'm good. Nothing else to add.
Nothing else to add? Anybody else? Any reports? Tom, you have any?
Yeah, I have one just real quick on Drug Council. We're going through a little bit of a transition. Tammy Nicholson, who is running the Drug Council, has moved on in her career. And Mitch Dowell, who used to be our counselor at Gateway, has moved over to take her place. We now have a replacement counselor at Gateway that insight is provided, and they're seeking funding for a second one. And I know during Lindsey and I's breakfast with the principals, we were able to hear that East is looking for another counselor of that sorts to model what they're doing at Gateway at East. So there's some opportunity there that's coming along real well. So hopefully with Mitch and on the Drug Council now, he'll bring his knowledge of the school system into that work as well, so it's a good move.
All right, if that is all, then is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom, second by Wes. All in favor?